Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Austin.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Gilberson.
Here.
Dartner.
Here.
Bakerly. Davis. Butterfield.
Here.
Sholtest.
Here.
Two absent here.
All right, let's stand up for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, united in its own with liberty and justice for all.
Leslie, do you want to lead us through the?
I am not.
You are not?
Nope, I'm leaving it all up to Tom.
Okay, stop.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, there are two main agenda items we'd like to go over. The first would be 2025 capital expenditures, and the second would be looking forward to 2025's capital expenditure. First off, for 2025, remind you back to the budget season, we approved five total projects, along with two squad cars, and then an allocation for some public works equipment with our 2025 budget of $485,000. In the meantime, the city has closed on the sale of some real property down in Redwood Falls, also known as, like, Corner Home Medical, used to be the Rice Home Medical Building. The city, the proceeds from that sale were $941,000. Along with that, so there are a few urgent needs that we've identified as conversation, maybe to take direction or action sooner. The first would be a public works shop roof. This is the main shop at the public works garage where they store a lot of their equipment, a lot of their, just right behind their office area. It's leaking water quite a bit. In this last rain event that we had, it displayed that it was leaking quite a bit inside the building. So the roof is in need of repair. The second would be the public works shop walls. This is going to be a little bit, the building to the southeast of the main shop, and on the corner towards the top, the bricks are actually separated, and water would be able to get in the walls on that building. And as the freeze thaw cycles happen, as we go through seasons, that could potentially get worse. So it's noted as a problem today. Third would be the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center. Upon starting the season this year, they have identified one of the three sand filters that there that circulate the water have failed. The state has approved the city to operate on two filters for the season. With that, our water is circulated every three hours under normal circumstances. Going down to two of the three filters will be able to get it in about three and a half hours, and the state is okay with that. However, it would need to be addressed at the end of the season. And then the fourth item is the law enforcement center heat pumps. Kandui County did complete the work for the cooling and heating, it's the geothermal system out at the law enforcement center. The city of Wilmer is responsible for a portion of this invoice, that 45% of the project were up, probably $192,000. So kind of our main question and topic of conversation tonight, we would like to see feedback from the council, what your wishes might be, so we could come back for potential action items at our May 19 meeting of the city council. To either go out for bids or quotes, or not do anything would be another option. So I just seek feedback from the council on maybe identifying, going through with some of these highlighted projects or not.
Just had a question on the law enforcement center. Did the city have a say in that, or did the county just go ahead and do it and say?
That, so I was not working at the city, I was actually working for the county at the time, and I don't know if there was conversation at the time. But we do have an invoice from them. They do have an engineer that goes through the portion of the law enforcement center that the police department occupies, and there's, they portion out the building to what we occupy, so it's an engineer's allocation. This is expenses, but I'm not sure of any previous conversations.
That might be nice to know for future, because I think we've dealt with it before like that, where, I mean, we have some sort of lease with them that indicates we will pay for improvements. However, it feels like we should have a say in when the improvements get done versus just sent bill when it is done.
Yep, so on that, we personally, due to this, Administrator Valiant, Operations Director Box and I met with the county administrator Baker, as well as our facilities director, Mr. Thorson, to go over future CIP needs for shared buildings, like the law enforcement center, the library is another major one. There was something else that was highlighted for those instances, so we aren't taken by surprise, and so we can also look for more future needs. There are going to be more needs, but we won't know any figures until July-ish this year for those.
I think you also had, or someone had made a comment about, we only need to pay half of it and we could wait to do the other. For, just curious if it makes sense to do the whole amount now, or we also need to build our cash reserves back up? Where do these figure, how do these figures come out with, what should we do first?
So that's, that pay the half or split it over a couple of years wasn't a acknowledgement or an agreement between both administrators, the city and the county to work it out, because they understand it as well, you know, it's a significant dollar amount improvement. So that's something that we were, you know.
It's up to the council if you want to pay half or not.
But what do we? That is not. Get our reserves back up to the level of minimum level of cash.
That's under $700,000.
So this won't, even if we paid half, wouldn't solve it at that?
Correct.
$700,000, that's to get us to what the state mandates we have to have an operating reserve, or what is it?
Yeah, that's a council policy on our, yep.
My question is, on the 2025 capital budget plan, because a lot of what's listed up here, if you're involved, heat pumps, that budget, the first other three are in the 2026 plan, to move forward from COVID. How much of the 2025 plan is left?
Quite a bit. With that, those did get pulled forward to our 2026.
Some of these got moved?
If they were unfunded in 2025, if there is still a request, they got moved forward to be requested in 2026 or future years. And that's, we can get to it later, on the italicized version of the sheets I just handed out, were pulled forward from previous years, I believe.
Right. Box.
No, I'm looking at, I'm just looking at the 2025 budget, and I didn't know, like, a lot of the stuff we've already voted on and approved, are the other items going to come forward this year, or are they going to get punched into 26?
Yeah, so the council approved, there are two, two projects at the airport that were funded, two, the door and the wall of the civic center are technically two separate projects, those are both funded. The IT security cameras at Civic Center in Robins Island was funded. The public works equipment reserve, $137,000, was funded, and then the two squad cars that we just took delivery on. Everything else is still a request. On your 2026 sheets, it's item, item number two, five, six, 14, 18, 20, have been carried forward from the 2025.
Everything else on 2025 is funded?
It was just the ones that Mr. Roden's had just identified, otherwise some have been removed in their entirety or moved to 27.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out, because if you want to quit now, is if you add the heat pumps and the other three projects, that's $780,000, right, from the heat pumps all in one year, which, that's essentially 75% of the revenue from Rice Home Medical. And if you take the other 25%, $233,000 and pump it in the reserves to fund about a third of the reserve shortfall, right? So it's going to have to single the one on there. If you're funding something that was, we didn't know was coming down the pipe, what you might have to sacrifice as a result of it because of this windfall from the civil building?
That is an option.
I'm good with that, but the one question that I have is, since I'm having trouble getting that project done out of the civic center, on that wall, are we, what more will we be facing to? I'm worried that we need to get that wall done, and I'm worried that it's going to take more than what's in the budget to do it.
Yeah, it's, what we're going to make right now, we found some structural plans, so they're going through there to see what we can do structurally with those pillars that are in there. Hopefully, they're core filled, so that's going to help us out. I think the big issue is going to get that steel header out of the doors is where I think we're running into a lot with the contractors, they just don't want to mess with it, so.
Because of the danger of the wall?
That's the danger, but I mean, not, not yet. He was off last Friday, so.
Is that because of the danger of the wall?
And how they're going to support it. They get, so they got that, the steel beam on there, and then the door frame, so.
If we recommend to do what Councilmember Gardner said, then we end up needing more money for the civic center, can we take some, can we move to just take some back out of reserves then?
To do that, yes.
Okay.
I would presume it'd be a contract award, so it'd be maybe a change order if there was more required. On a tangent to that, Mr. Baumgarn was able to get measurements for the pool filters, and it's looking a lot better than maybe we had anticipated from last week, as far as the door width and the size of the filters themselves. So that part isn't as much of a question mark anymore.
So you did have to put the doors on?
We may have to take the door out, but that's.
Just going to cut them orange, is it?
Yes, it's just taking the door frame off, which is.
That's a trouble. Well, for.
Yeah, so we confirm the measurements with.
We've all got our furniture at our house, haven't we?
Right. There is no room to move.
There's no room to move.
So, but that's a, a big question mark that was addressed, and I think that's in a good way for the size.
It could be expensive, a lot of work involved with those block cars, core fills. You know, you've got to have it supported.
When the structural engineer came out, he thought they were, when he first inspected it, so, we want to make sure that the plans, and Justin was able to dig deep and find some plans, so they're with him right now.
Somebody's going to have to come up with quite the scheme to take that header out and put it, how you can support that above.
And I don't know if they, well, I'm just thinking, do they put one set of doors in, and then try to get the beam in, I don't know. We got to support it somehow. It'll be interesting.
So that issue, no?
I was saying, in a couple of weeks, so.
So county will be okay if we came with either requests for quotes or requests for bids at our next meeting? And then should we include the full payment to the county in your county available package, or for the heat pumps?
45%.
Our portion is still 192,000 there.
Yeah.
50/50, it's part of the two years.
The figure that's in here is half of it?
No.
So it's that's the entire, which is 192,000.
That's all, yep.
Total that we would pay would be, what, 716, if my math is right?
No, the total share was.
No, I mean, all, all four.
50%.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, all four things was just over $700,000.
Yes.
What is the problem? Waiting to pay the county over the two-year period. They charge us interest. What's, what would be the hurry? So it's done, I guess.
It's too funny, it's not good. How can you make money without money?
Okay. It's up to you, you know, if, we're good either way. I know that it's been done for a couple of years, we leave it to county already, so.
I don't pay that, do it in half, unless there's a reason to do the whole. Figure, you know, our house and trust your judgment. Then you just have to plan that you're going to have.
Yep.
$94,000 in CIP next year that you got to fund.
We put that in the reserve today, and then we pull it out next year, okay? We could do that.
Unless something, the next thing comes up.
The idea is not to pull anything out of the reserve, though. Let's put it in there. If we're trying to build back up our reserve, the idea is not to do that. It's a conversation for 2026. No problem going to.
The various, I mean, it's an interest-bearing account that it would put in, yes.
Yeah.
It makes.
I mean, not specifically this dollar amount, but it'd be with the rest of our money.
Right, so I think, no reason, point is that it makes us 4%, hopefully 3%. Getting rid of it makes us 0%.
Okay, so half, half this year, half next year, and then requests for action for the other items, then, that'd be?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to that. Thank you, guys. So the next would be our 2026, looking forward to our capital improvement plan. You all should have received an updated 2026 plan. I'll just run through them really quick here, and I guess at the end of the day, staff is just looking for a recommendation for what to, what to include in our 2026 preliminary budget that we'll have at the end of the summer, early fall, or if you have identified projects to include in the preliminary budget for when the mayor's budget is presented in September. The first, we'll start at the airport, is airfield drainage improvements. The city would be responsible for 2.5% of the project, or $12,500. The other 2.5 would come from, and 95% would come from the FAA, so that would be a, just the Wilmer portion of that project.
And if we don't do that, do we lose the federal grant?
Yeah, yeah. The second would be the elevator at City Hall. This is a new code change that would have to be completed by 2027, for $160,000. Along with that would be our fire alarm panel system at City Hall for about 25. What's the consequences for not doing those?
Probably no elevator, and then you're not ADA compliant.
Once they're down the road for quite a while.
Yeah.
But we're going to, if the plan is to demolish that building in a couple of years.
It's in a couple of years now?
I don't know.
There is no plan. That's the plan.
How do they go from 70 to 160?
We were originally funding it over two years. We're going to get fined for not having an elevator?
Can they shut us down?
I don't know, but I'm not sure what the rest of the questions are, but you'd have to look into that.
It's the fire department.
I have no idea.
We don't have.
Elevator?
We don't have an elevator, we're not ADA compliant for being a government building.
That would be the big thing, if we received a complaint by somebody, or if inspector showed up and followed us up to be ADA compliant. I think in past history, cities have been fined, and basically given the opportunity to take care of it within a short amount of time.
OSHA compliance might not make it, more of an OSHA thing than anything. And they're not very kind.
How much do we have in the City Hall fund that we've been putting away for, for past three or even four years?
A million, we're levying another. It's 587 this year.
So 1.5.
Well, 2 million, yes.
10,000?
Yep.
2 million plus?
585.
No.
No.
2 million by the end of the year.
Little over 2 million. Moving on to the civic center, the civic center roof on the Blue Line Center, the seams and the, like, the, is it the screw head, the screw heads are loose, linking in quite a bit more, as well as a storage shed. A lot of the equipment is stored outside on the same wall as we toured by the shed that they have. The Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center, the zero-depth pool slide, or the frog slide, as we saw it on our tour, is at the end of its life, it's been replaced by some fiberglass repair shops, but I do not believe it is even repairable another time, it's gone too many times, if that's a fair statement. The pool filters, as we just spoke about, that'll be taken care of. The First Street Bridge maintenance, there are some rubber seals on the decking there that have pulled away, so water is able to get in on that First Street Bridge, and then obviously the freeze thaw, it's going to expedite some deterioration on that. So there would be some maintenance on the First Street Bridge that's requested.
This is for engineering, it says?
Yep.
Those not fixing it, it's just figuring out how to fix it?
No, it's of the engineering.
Department, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So this should be the.
This is actually fixing it?
The project, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Why wouldn't that be a state of vigil? Would it be 1971?
It's our bridge, it's not their bridge, we clarified that way back in 2021. The city owns that bridge, so every maintenance, whatever, is ours.
Can we clarify the land, we never clarified the land under the bridge.
We clarified the land.
Then report that to us as part of this.
You have a, I'm sure.
No.
Okay, I'll send you the plaque, it is our.
So, how do we do about the fact that we have? Someone else's fence and other property under the bridge when it comes to repairs? I mean.
No, here's, here's.
It's, it's off of.
It's on his property.
I understand, I understand that, but his property is under our bridge.
Yes.
And so there was something.
Can't do anything about that.
Back at the county, so what happens if that bridge has to be torn down? Or redone? Or if something major?
It would have to be done on our property.
So we would have to move the bridge.
They would be able to do the work over. Where the bridge is existed is where they would start.
With what he's doing on the other side, is there any reason for us to try to maintain more land there somehow? Than just to sit here and wait for something to happen?
There's no way we can retain, obtain more land from him.
Are you recommending it in Maine, or what are you recommending here?
I don't know, but it's, to me, it's a problem in how it was given back to us. We were given a bridge that we don't own the land to.
We own the land under the bridge. Where the pillars are at, that is ours.
There you go.
There's no easement on it, it is ours, it's written in the plaque.
He has his fence under the bridge.
That's where his property is.
That's his property.
And then where the pillars are, that is actually our land. It's not an easement, it's our land.
It's actually railway.
Where his fence is, is his property. And where the pillars are, is our property, it's deeded property.
So we can't ever make that bridge wider, can't deal with the narrow walking path?
I can't tell you that, I don't have.
Do a, well, that's, that's, I think, part of the issue that I have, is that.
I don't know where stuff is at, how that works.
You can always make the street wider, right? Why is a bridge any different than making a street wider?
Because we don't own the land.
But we don't own the street, we won't want to fight that.
Our street, sample, and they made it.
We have to wait.
Am I the only one worried about it? Right? We lived through some ugly times there, and I didn't think that we ever got the answer with how it got deeded to us that way.
You didn't say that's the right, the whole project for the rubber seals, or that's for engine, for this?
No, that's the, that would be project cost. Yeah, so it would include replacing the rubber expansion glands, the railing rehab, and the deck improvements.
For 150?
It's a medium.
Yep.
The, I guess the other possible part is that it's on a state aid road, so if we wanted to potentially use state aid dollars, but those numbers are also limited for roads allocations every year.
Was that bridge given to the city by TURBAC?
I don't know how it got, why the city accepted the bridge. The council just did.
And that, we reviewed that documentation.
Yes. You own the bridge.
Can you just bring that documentation up again, because we have a few, you know, councils all over, and so.
So you will do that.
Moving on to the fire department, the firefighter pagers that they wear daily, get called in on, those are up for replacement, as well as some wildland firefighting gear. Parks and Rec, master park plan is being requested, the protective netting at the Civic Center complex, that's on the new four baseball softball fields out across the street from the Parks and Rec Event Center. Swanson Field fences, Swanson Field bikes, this is going to be a three-year plan or request. Currently, this one is the green field, which would be the western field, closest to the railroad tracks. And then also a walking and bike path, the DNR grant, so it's, it's nice to have some seed money, so when grants do become available, the city match is already allocated, so the, the chances of receiving those funds are significantly higher.
Has the master park plan on the CIP and not just the normal budget?
This is $90,000. We could put it on the CIP operations.
It seems like most of the things on this list leave us with some sort of physical asset.
We have to do the master park plan soon.
Do we have to do it, Rob?
I'd say, it's a yes or no answer, I know that probably does not clarify it, if we want to be able to go out for more grants, we're going to have to have a new master park plan.
Do that in 2015?
Correct, and with all the new amenities that we have, and everything, that was a suggestion from greater Minnesota, Parks and Trails is up here.
Is that a lot of money? I mean, I don't.
I feel like it was a little bit high, because we said that with what we, how our parks are classified now, what we've been with the community parks, neighborhood parks, and everything, we've done a good job of ours, replacing the park equipment, and that's what we, we got as a quote. I think that it can be smaller than that, because we can do some of the work in-house.
So what are we getting for $90,000?
It's going to be more working on making sure that the ADA requirements are all intact with some of, with our parks, working on what our community parks are going to be, so that's like, we got Summer Miller done, we don't got it completely done, we don't have nothing of Lincoln done, Northside Park, where you touched Ramblewood Park, about what can we do for those amenities, and then what's the big picture? So if we would want to go out for, like, an outdoor recreation grant from the DNR, where do we want to target that at? Let's just say it's at the DOAC. So they'd be able to master plan the DOAC area, if we want to put pickleball courts, basketball courts, those type of things there. In order to get these grants, you're going to have a park plan, and ours is 10 years old now, and we're way different than what we were when we established that plan, that's.
Not something that we can do in-house.
I'm not, I can, I can just say, I want a pickleball court there.
Yeah.
And that type of stuff, or will it fit and everything, I can do that, but to get the nuts and bolts, no.
A pickleball court in other location, why aren't we moving it back, having all? Pickleball court in other location, why aren't we moving it back, having all pickleball courts all in Sperryville? That way if you guys ever run a tournament, you guys all in one place and you don't have to run people back and forth across town. It would make more sense, you know, that's where, that's where you've got the majority of it and there's room up there for it.
Well, there's, you can look at it two different ways. You can look at it that way or you can say that when you look at parks and everything, you quadrant your town out. And so not one side of your community always gets the amenities.
Well, it is.
And it's in a, and it's in a non-residential area too, so that's, you know, because pickleball gets to be a nuisance with the noise, so you want to keep it away from the houses. So there's two ways to look at it.
Yeah. Well, you know, we ran with Rice Park down there, you know, center of town for years and years and years and years. You know, still busy, you know, that's the neighborhood, you know? I, I just made smarter, have pickleball all in one park in town. They, they already know where it's at. Well, there, you know, you go to Walmart, you know where you're going. You go to Target, you know where you're going. You go to McDonald's, you know where you're going. Pickleball, okay, pickleball is in Sperryville, you know where you're going. I think it makes more sense to get tournaments going, you know, it's gonna be a huge, huge sell, you know, that's an up and growing sport.
Are they?
I realize I'm fast forwarding and everything is something that needs to be done. Last year, how much did we spend in cash on CIP?
Four hundred, or twenty twenty-five, four eighty-five.
This year?
Yep.
Four eighty-five?
Yep.
Chance that we don't have even that much to spend this year without raising taxes. Correct?
Correct.
And our total here is three million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Forty-five, does that include accruing for fire trucks, something like that, or is that just cash that went out the door?
Cash allocated to projects, with the exception of in the Public Works Department, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars was, is put into a fund for future equipment purchases of truck or whatever.
So it's not forty-five for the purchase of a fire truck?
No.
True money for the purchase of a fire truck?
We're trying to.
So it's two hundred thousand that's in here necessarily?
That was not, not funded from last year's. Correct.
Correct.
So we were trying to build that, twenty twenty-four was three hundred and fifty, twenty twenty-five was four eighty-five, so we're trying to build that into the levy or, or somewhere to, to fund it.
And every increase of how many dollars results in a one percent increase to the lobby?
Two hundred thousand roughly. The police department is requesting an indoor cold storage. This would also be a collaboration with the county because both, both departments are in need of storage to keep their equipment inside, other trailers inside, so they don't get exposed to the elements as much. Moving on to public works, the shop, the roof replacement we just talked about in the last agenda item. The next would be the traffic signal repair. This would be an annual request until all the traffic signals in town are updated. I don't know how many years that might be, off the top of my head, but just to.
Goes all the way through twenty thirty.
And then the building repair, we also just.
Just that, that traffic signal replacement, what are the, the repairs, what all would that entail?
So that, that would get you, or get us a brand-new cabinet with the computer, the brains of the traffic lights. And either loops in the road or the camera system above, which both do the same thing, they detect the traffic one way or other. So it would be the, the entire, everything aside from the, the poles themselves.
Does that include cameras then? Or is that a whole separate thing for police?
Separate, I think the, so currently the only intersection we have cameras at is First and Trap right now. I believe the police can pull very limited info off that. Their, their purpose is just to detect what traffic is sitting at the lane. They, they might be able to take a still shot and see probably not what they're looking for, at least with this type that we have.
I just want to move back to that indoor cold storage for the police. Hundred and fifty, is that our portion or is that the, the county knows about this? Have we built, county, we're looking at doing this so they can come up with the other portion?
Yep.
They're the ones that started it.
Okay. So the county knows about that.
Yep.
I have a question then on the procedure aspect of that, starting to get into the weeds maybe a little bit, but this is something that we're planning together, it sounds like. And they're really for both parties to approve the purchase. But earlier they just went ahead with the heat props?
Those are maintenance items. Different.
Well, I just want to make sure, yeah, this on ours, the county knows.
Yes.
It's additional.
I say we build it in charge of half after it's all done. Fifty-five percent.
The stormwater and wastewater, those would not be either sales tax bonds with a local option sales tax or bonded through the wastewater treatment plant fund. We got BNR design, plant upgrades, Eagle Lake panel upgrades, those, if those projects were to move forward, those would be in a bonding with next year's street improvement bonds. I, I don't know if you have an update of which projects, if, if Jason, Mr. Lindahl has gotten any updates on the BNR at all.
So currently the BNR is, it stands for bio nutrient reduction, I believe is what it is. And they are working with the plant engineers to determine with our nitrogen levels and our phosphorus levels, this project will bring both of those down. But at a certain point, they have to choose which one they bring down, nitrogen or phosphorus. And so they're just trying to work through the details to make sure this is the exact system we want and it's gonna do everything that we want it to do before we invest those kind of dollars. So I, long answer, no, I do not have the details.
So that's, that's the CIP projects, now moving on to vehicles. The first would be the fire station, there's a two thousand six Ford F-150, it's like a work truck, a runner vehicle that is beyond its useful life. And the, the next would be a, an allocation for a future pump, pumper truck. And I think, I believe Chief Hanson would like to order that in twenty twenty-seven for a. Twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine delivery?
I'd say probably twenty twenty-nine delivery. So, and that is, update on that, we just did find out that some of the seals and stuff on the pump for that truck are starting to see the useful life go away and it's, we're gonna try to, went into the next couple of years, basically. Instead of spending twenty-five thousand, they get stuff redone.
Parks and Recreation, a bobcat tool cat that's used a lot out at the Civic Center, Rec Event Center complex and I believe at the fields. As well as a Ford F-250, which is used to plow out at the trucks or out at, at that complex. So that, it's just kinda had a, it's also beyond its useful life for what it's used for. The police department is requesting four squad cars to keep up with their fleet that they operate on as well as their command swap bus. That was here during the, the tour. I don't know if anybody had a chance to jump on it, but that is also being asked or requested to be replaced. The Public Works Department has the remainder of the vehicles, two Ford F-350s with dump boxes. These are, these are used pretty heavily throughout the daily, annual work that Public Works does. A loader, this was originally scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty-three, Public Works. Another plow truck, we have, I believe, eleven plow trucks in our fleet and so roughly one per year to keep up with the replacement on that. A zero-turn Covotamore, that was also scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty-three, so it's been, it's been delayed. The snowgo, which is an attachment for the front of a loader, that would be a big snow blower, that's gonna be used primarily on large snow events. It's gonna be used in our downtown snow emergencies as well as it'll help out at the airport on, to get rid of some snow and some drifting out there. And the last would be a street sweeper for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Once again, that is used as pretty much spring to fall to clean up the winter sand, to clean up the leaves, clean up the streets. This helps with our MS four certification and just keep our streets clean.
Would that be a third one or a replacement, replacement?
So, so yeah, to summarize, we, we spent or allocated three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty-four, four eighty-five in twenty twenty-five. Also in twenty twenty-four, we did do an equipment certificate. We purchased the aerial fire truck that's on order right now, a plow truck as well as a, a road grader for Public Works. That was roughly, is just under two million, around one point nine. We, the big ticket items on the vehicles are roughly one point two, so that is an option for next year.
How did the equipment certificates work? Just payment plans in or?
Yeah, so it's actually part of our bond. So the, the nice part about the equipment certificate is we can dictate the terms. So our street improvement bonds are fifteen years, the last equipment certificate we did, we just did ten-year repayment. So we can, we can have it shorter than the fifteen-year bonds, you know, which I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna borrow for a vehicle any longer.
Does that include the multi-years savings plan for the fire department's pumper truck? And that we put on an equipment certificate?
No, you can't put that on an equipment certificate. You can't hold money.
And then I just want to go back to the police cars. If I recall right, weren't we supposed to have six or eight this year, twenty twenty-six coming up? Does this reduce already yet?
I do recall that.
Yeah, it was, that was just a plan that the allies had put out.
I just want to make sure that, you know.
Typically it's four.
I thought, oh, last year when we were looking at it, it was almost like.
That was the way it was on it, but that was just a.
I know they took the, they helped us city out by reducing it for twenty twenty-five from four to, so. I want to make sure, you know, this is, you know, reduced from like eight to four, so we don't reduce it anymore.
And I do know that Chief Holm is.
Frank can answer that because hence the committee for the vehicles.
So typically every year, we, we shoot for four squad cars. If you look at the vehicle replacement, there may be like eight or ten cars coming up. It's just very hard for them to know which cars are gonna go until it's time for them to leave, you know? So we shoot for four cars and it's been that way for fifteen years, fifteen, twenty years.
How many cars do they have, right? I think sixteen.
Twenty-two. Yeah, right in the twenty-ish mark.
In the last five to six years?
They shoot for five, five, six years mileage-wise, they get, they're up there in the hundred to twenty, hundred twenty-five, hundred thirty thousand miles, which is really hard on a squad. They're, they're a tough car. But now they're running into, you can't find them anywhere. Getting a little bit better, but they've been really hard and they're hard, once they get over that, it's hard to get equipment changed, really, because there's such backlog with that. So they're running squad, sorry.
Sorry, I know I interrupted you.
No, they're just running squads until they're literally pushing them out the backlot. I mean, that's kinda where they're going right now. So they shoot for four, that's kinda where we're at.
Do we get any kind of trade or resale on them?
About this much. You know, like I said, we're running basically into the ground and they're not, it was kinda taking them off our hands as a courtesy, so we don't have to run everywhere. Yep, yep, I got them.
But I just want to make sure that we're not gonna change the place again, you know? Like I said, I, I thought they, Western Sensor Aid for the year, last year.
And I, I do know that Chief Holm is, he's got a very good grasp of it. He used to do all the fleet, maybe he still does, but, and I know that that they're frequent flyers at the Public Works Garage getting repaired, so I do know that they take good care of them, but they're stretching them, I think as far as they can really go right now, so.
But Tom, really indications out of St. Paul for local government aid aren't great, right?
There was a report last week that is in the Senate version of their budget bill to reduce local government aid. It'd have a roughly two hundred thousand dollar negative impact to the city.
So that's a, that's a, that's a percent increase?
Yep.
And I'm assuming that we're probably looking at some kind of increase in the, in the budget that the mayor will propose to us?
Yes.
If I'm reading and doing my math right, the CIP, if we green-lighted every single one of those projects, that's a sixteen percent increase there. So that's a lot.
It is, which kind of boils back to the original question, it's just direction. What, what would the council be comfortable with seeing for our proposed capital improvement portion of the preliminary budget? Or if there are identified projects that we must see, we will build those in to the preliminary budget.
I'm, I'm assuming like forty-five.
Oh, we're gonna take five sixteen out of it. So we just gained two percent, that was a government cut.
Yeah.
It's a two percent cut, right?
There you go. And I mean, the problem is, is like, again, everything on this list, we need it. And if you kick it down the road like we have in the past, it just gets bigger next year. And I don't know how many of us want to vote for a sixteen, nineteen percent increase to the tax label in CIP. But if you don't, then it's a thirty percent increase you bring us next year.
That's, that's the overall goal, is to, is to build in CIP funds over years. We all understand it's not realistic to, to ask or ask the council of a, a large, a three point seven dollar CIP list. We're all aware of that. Number that you're all comfortable with.
Yeah, because I think like the largest number on this list often, you know, draws the most eyes when you're looking to make cuts. But I actually feel the strongest, about like the, the best financial philosophy-wise that I think we're making is starting to, to pay into that fund for the pumper truck, for the fire department. I'd hate to see that cut off of CIP.
I think that we can do City Hall elevated fire line with my, my, for size for City Hall. Already put money, set money aside for City Hall already. We don't know where we're gonna go. You know, there's different options that have been floating around out there, you know, if we end up just fixing it up. You know, we'll save a lot more money being there, you know, we've all heard rumors and stuff like this about this location, that location, everything falls through, so. I just say we just keep ducking away on, waiting for the City Hall and draw some funds right now, fix it up and we can reduce at least, you know, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Right there. Money's already earmarked for City Hall, we're fixing up City Hall.
How does that five and a half million effect, in bond affect? Levy at all, it is not affected. You get five and a half million in here on bond?
Oh, yes, yes.
I still have to pay that money back.
Yes.
How does that affect?
So last year we closed at like six-ish million, it's gonna get three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar effect this year. Fifteen-year assessment or fifteen-year bond repayment terms. So that also does add, you know, we've, we've added since twenty-three, the levy of the streets to the texts instead of internal. So that also does add, you know, we've, we've added since '23, the levy of the streets to the texts instead of internal funding. So that has been an add as well. Yeah, roughly a million bucks a year so far.
The 5.5 though also includes, doesn't, that includes the total expected project. But we reduce that also by what MUC will pay us because they pay us for reconstruction. And then if there are any streets that are, or anything that we do that we can pay with our street funding that we get from the state, that would be a reduction. And then some of that, of course, bond is paid right back by assessments.
I think cost of number better feel points of an interest point when it comes to the City Hall funds. At some point, do we like, because every year we've been like 10%. So we're, we're setting aside a larger and larger amount of dollars every year. At some point, do we cap that and say, you know, well, we're only going to be setting aside 400,000? That's it, you know, and that opens up 185,000.
I think what you need to look at though is what cost, what would a bond cost us? And are we getting enough back to bond for a City Hall? Are we already saving, are we already getting enough to cover? Until you get enough to cover for a bond payment is where you need to set the cap. So I don't know what that is.
How much do we accrue for City Hall every year?
3% of our tax rate this year is 587.
So you're looking at less than a six-month back. Let's say we carved the 185,000 pounds proposing. You're looking at less than six months worth of. Right? That's how I, way I do my budget home is way different than how we do our budget here. If I have, if I have to spend a thousand dollars over the course of a year and I have a $500 expense comes in, means I got to wait six months to spend my thousand dollars through me, right? So if the rate were through me, it's less than six, less than a six-month.
Correct.
And current, currently right now, our debt service, it would, it would fund a 10 to 11 million dollar bill. We wouldn't have to raise taxes for that. So that's current, if you will, but that would be council's discretion if we wanted to decrease the City Hall, future City Hall levy.
I'm not arguing that at all. I'm just trying to figure out what did, what the reality of what Tom was.
Then back to Prakenar, the DNR grant, that's a requirement, right? For us to get the 50,000 is what we need to contribute, right?
It's a placeholder so we can go out and get a bigger grant.
Okay, so it's not something we have yet, but we're hoping to.
Yep, so I'd like to go out with a bigger number so we can get a more of a trail done or something like that.
I really would like to see us take a look at our local option sales tax and see what I mean, some of these figures are in here, probably fit into what we use the local option sales tax for. If we can go ask for an extension, I know that it's still in the twilight song at the legislature, but if they stop the moratorium and there was one city that got some, it through. But for us to be prepared to continually ask for an extension or to do a second local option sales tax, do we have to do that? I just don't see us being able to do lights or, you know, I don't, I just don't see us being able to do that. And they were actually projects that came through there, so would it make sense for us to try to do that?
I think it absolutely makes sense to try it. I mean, why not?
As much as they can do, I say no.
Yep.
Just to make the council aware, I believe both in the House and the Senate are proposing an extension of that moratorium until June 30th of 2026. But I mean, we can't plan, but.
Most of the league and the listener lobbying to, if you can't figure out what you wanted to do, then just please just remove, remove the the moratorium until you make up your mind what you want local option sales tax to use. I just think this would be ready.
I'm used to have left on that.
23rd or 23th?
I don't know how soon the legislators like to ask for an extension.
There are some communities that have done it successfully and some that I think are actually waiting right now to do that same thing, so. It's worth, to me, it's worth checking it out and being ready and, and actually talking to our legislators too about where we're at financially and what we need.
So again, we can start the conversation. We can start the ask next year.
Yeah.
So is that based on years or is it based on how much money we collect? Does it end early if we collect?
You can write it that, the current one is that way. Once we would collect enough, it would, either or.
And then.
You know, the 20 years or whatever money was or.
It was 13 years or $30 million, I believe. But of that also, it includes any interest we pay on bonds too. So we get to collect revenue for the bond payments too. So until the bonds are paid off, we can continue to collect.
I would imagine that inflation alone, we must be way ahead of schedule.
We are trending up. It's funny you say that. Today we got a local option sales tax from March significantly less than February. So I don't know if that's just a sign or what. We got $40,000 less than February in a short month.
Do you have a likely drop in past years?
We've seen fluctuations. This one was pretty abrupt though.
I know, I think I've been to a business bureau, those are slow months for hotels. And that is really down. And I think if you look at where people spend money in our community, that report that they get, which would be fun for us to hear sometime about the dollars that are being spent in our community, would probably reflect that same thing. I forget what the program's called, but they get a monthly report that shows where people are spending their money and what communities they're trying to spend.
Isn't that from their cell phone tracking that they use?
Yeah, and, and actually your debit cards and credit cards and all of that information.
I've never been through one of these before. Is, do we go through our own flying item? Decide how much money you want to spend and then see how many light engines fit in that? What's the protocol for how we do this?
Either way, we're open to, either way, if you want us to, you want to say, you know, increase the budget because we're, our budget was $450,000 this last year, so increase the budget another $200,000. So $685,000 is what you can spend. We will fit whatever can be in that.
$685,000 upon 3.7.
Well, we only had $485,000 last year.
We could do a little more in the $485 last year, right?
We started at 350 or 450.
Yeah, $485.
Yep, so.
It seems like we have to cut at least half to take, I mean, I, my suggestion right now is be to send us back to staff with the idea of come back to us once you've gotten this reduced to like what about half of this is for your priorities and you know, we can wrestle with it from there. It looks like a lot of this, like problem, prioritizing for you just.
But half of it is, I mean, that's.
I know.
I, I personally want to see the four squad cars left in though. I personally, you know, the police department went up to us last year and went up from four to, and I, like I said, if I recall right, I thought their budget for 2006, 2008 was up to six or eight for 2026 and then it got down to four.
But I think public works stuff is just as important. I think we just got to look at the whole thing and say, you know, if we have to wait one more year, how do we do this?
We got a dangerous situation with Public Works and Park and Rec, with the city center and the, and the Public Works branch. That's a serious problem.
Well, we're solving the one.
Yeah. Those, those are taken care of.
Would the council be interested in seeing, so I, just as an example, that's what a potential, if the council wanted to do another equipment certificate, I mean roughly 1.2 million over under a bond or an equipment certificate, it does reduce that total CIP, but again, it's a, it's still an increase to the budget over the defined period of time, 10 years.
Is the idea then that we're going to continue to do that year after year? Because I was going to catch up with them.
I'd like to. It would be nice to be able to pay cash for our needs, but it's a crushing interim.
Well, I don't agree with that. I think we can dispatch the staff, let them paddle it out. And, you know, print something that we don't have to work so hard about and doing everything.
I just want to remember, last year we did this, then we sacked and staff didn't do that. And we came back and said, we don't want to raise taxes. So I think what we're saying is, are we acknowledging tonight that in order to do what we need to do with CIP, we have to raise taxes? And what is that going to be versus last year, we said, don't raise taxes and we, you know, where else can we cut? And maybe we need to lobby hard to not have our LTH. That's going on right now too. $200,000 is a lot of money.
I think the school board is having a discussion if they're going to be laying off people. Now, is that something we have to say, what are they doing too? I mean, we're getting off there, you know, we've been a 15, 10, 9% in the past three, four years and now 16, 20%. With the way inflation's going, can our residents handle it? I'm not getting a 40, 50% pay raises every, every year to cover, cover inflation, you know. School board, you know, they're sitting in the same boat. They're actually talking about layoffs. The city will need to start doing that.
I guess from each department, especially when we look at the police force, the Public Works, Park and Rec, Fire, I would be open to doing the certificates. If the payments to come out of those certificates can be through operations reduction. So if you feel that you have such a need for this equipment, that'll make your operations that much more smooth. Are you able to reduce your operations budget by that same dollar amount? I'd be open to the certificate in that case to wash the, the payments out of our budget. I don't want to have to be dealing with this in five years and another council and so forth to pay for these things. So if, if the departments feel that it's critical that we spend $2.2 million and the certificate's now going to cost us an extra $300,000, we'll have to reduce those operations by that amount. And then we'll make a check for you this year. But if you can't reduce the operations by that amount, then you might not be able to get all the shiny new vehicles.
Thank you, Marys. What part of our operations budget are salaries and benefits?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
Rough, rough two-thirds.
Our Public Works is not overstaffed for the things that we ask them to do, police department and fire department. It's great to say that, but where, if we think we're overstaffed, where would that be? And what would we not do if we had to do reductions in staff? Back to less police officers, less Public Works staff, so we ask them to do less. But our, our community engagement and the things that we ask to do, they're already struggling to get it done. So I, I hear what you're saying, but we did that a few years ago. We sent back and said, take 10% off your budget. And I don't think it hurts to ask departments to do that, but majority of it is salaries. Where are we overstaffed?
I think, you know, it was like a third of our budget is the police department. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Yeah, you know, and I think to that point, when we had this conversation last year, we got real uncomfortable when I asked questions, for me at least, about like, hey, we're trying to hire four officers. What if we tried to hire two instead of four? Especially if the, you know, the, the school resource officers no longer being needed and being kind of the staff seemed to be reduced by four. And you got real uncomfortable. And I think you joined in asking some of those questions and, and we got labeled in social media about defunding the police. And if it wasn't for former council member Osmis Ossel asking the questions, I think that would have got a lot more uncomfortable, both for you and I. It's hard to label Julie as a defund police. Yeah, I, I mean, it seems to me that this community does not have much of an appetite for fewer police officers. And that's got to be interesting to know what the percentage of the budget for, you know, salary and benefits just for officers is. But it's going to be a pretty large section of the budget. You guys, you're already working on it.
We haven't sent the departments, that'll be at the end of the month. So they won't have that back until July for operating budget requests.
I know there's probably not huge appetite for this, but just throwing it out there. We pay Bolden and Make enormous amount of money since we got rid of our engineering department. Could we hire a couple of engineers and save money that way?
Hiring an engineer is very difficult. Mankato has been trying, Hutchinson has been trying. I just had a conversation with an engineer today. He named off three cities that have, three to four cities that have been trying to hire engineers the last two years.
And I know Bolden and Make does an outstanding job for us, so it's not a chastisement of them at all.
When we had an engineering department, the department itself was over $700,000 and that was back in 2021. So now I think your engineering department would be close to 1.2 maybe.
And we'd name new software and we'd name new, I mean, basically we'd be sending up.
Because, yeah.
Is it normal, the design of a project to be 20% of the total project cost? Is that normal? That seems exorbitant to me.
I understand.
Well, then we also got to look to, you know, the general contractors, you know, they're going to pack on like 10% of whatever the word. I understand how construction works, but just the design, we do, when it comes to us, they say, here's, here's, we have to give them money for design and then they go for bid and then we come back and we approve the ASBID budget, right? ASBID budget is whatever the public opening was, plus whatever they're charging us for design. And almost every single job, it's 20% of the total project value is design. They're running off their margins like, you know, one more, like off their margins. I understand how companies work, but.
Did we spend $1.2 million last year for Bolton and Make?
Couldn't tell you.
I think though, what we've also learned is that if we would have an engineering department, spend $1.2, you still need Bolton and Make to come in and subsidize because our, our appetite for road construction exceeds our capacity.
Well, it's not just that. Bolton and Make does our wastewater department. Of course, that's paid out of wastewater rates. And so there are specialties. Our airport is done by Bolton and Make and that's a specialty, you know, so we need those. And so there are still things even just under general street design, like Mr. Oskid said, that they did have Bolton and Make in the past do also.
Sure.
So there's still things that they have to do.
Be that big a savings.
Right, yeah. It might not be that, you know, there'd be some savings, but not a lot.
Is there another company out there that we could enter into a relationship other than Bolton and Make that's 15%?
You can always do an AP for any engineering department. Otherwise, every project you go to, you would do an AP for every project.
Some numbers to our police department, the council's in H. City. 84% of their budget is salaries and benefits. And then of the total general fund or levy is, just their salaries are 27% of the total levy at the police department. So that's salaries, benefits.
For you math nerds that are. For you math nerds that are smarter than I am, if we were to say we want a 10% across the board cut, how many officers do we lose?
There's what, 30?
Eight, 38 right now?
No, they don't have that many hired.
Lose about eight.
We lose eight officers on a 10%. Yeah.
Eighty officers.
But they don't have that.
No, but it makes that dollar, you know, the, you'd be asking the police department to cut the equivalent of that if you just said everybody, there's their budget.
So basically what you'd be saying is right now, they don't have 38 officers. They have 30.
Right up 30.
Thirty.
One's retiring next.
Two.
It'd be like.
Yep. Retiring, right? So you don't, you don't replace any of the officers that you have open right now and you don't replace any that are retiring.
We terminate two on top of that, it sounds like.
So you reduce by a fraction and don't replace, right? That's how a lot of private companies do it, right?
Right.
You people that are smarter running cities than I am, what does a healthy city allocate every year percentage wise for capital improvements in the budget? A healthy city, not us, it's clearly not healthy. You know, it's a peers you talked to, when you went to school about how to operate a city, I only finished half of my public administration degree. So what do you think of a healthy percentage of your overall budget for capital?
Thinking of other comparables, I'd say they're a million, a million and a half.
I'm not looking for a dollar, I'm looking for a percentage.
Oh, percent.
Cause there's nothing in here that we won't eventually do. It's either going to break, fall apart, stop working, hurt somebody. There's nothing in here we're not going to do. I don't think there's any, well, the only thing in here, well, there might be a couple in here that are like, yeah, that's not happening, but most part, especially on the vehicle side, we're going to do those, it's just a matter of when and you can only punt that football so far down the road.
Between 5 and 10%.
Okay, so our budget's $20 million, $22 million, right? So if we said between 5 and 10%, it's a super round number.
2.2 would be, 2.2, one and a half is 6.2.
That doesn't get us anywhere close to what we need for the 5.2. This year it's 3.7, this year there are more, years in here is less, let's just say it ourselves. So to get us to 5, 2.2, that means we have to increase the levy by 1.7, since we already have 4.5 maked by, or 500,000. So what's 1.7, Justin, at 1% every 200,000? It's 7%. No, it's 9%. Right? So if we said a 9% increase and that sets us on trajectory, so we don't have to have this stupid conversation every year, we can say, every year we get 2.2 million dollars in the capital improvement line. You can come to us with more, but that's, we're going to bake that into the budget pie. That seems to make sense to me. Now, that means all of us falling on our swords and saying, congratulations taxpayer, everything I just ran on, I'm throwing out the window because we are broken as a city right now, from a budget perspective. I will tell you, that capital premature was depressing, right? Every piece of, we got reins, rain on the electoral panel of public works. I don't think there's a roof in the city that doesn't leak from what I saw. I know we only saw the worst, right? But just from a, we have to buy four squad cars a year. We have to buy a third of a fire truck every year to keep your trucks less than 25 years old, right? We have to buy a snowplow every year to keep your snowplows less than 11 years old. To do all of that math, if it's 2.2 million bucks, we can say, okay, manager's wanting 3.7, congratulations, you're not getting 1.5. So you guys can Indian leg wrestle, you can do whatever you got to do, or we can say, you're not getting it. But I am entirely open to saying, let's bake this thing into the pie and not have this discussion, because you can't continue to punt 3.5 million dollars in capital improvements every single year. Can't. Sorry, that was a long rant and I apologize.
But did we end up raising last year? What was it last year? We were right at 10, weren't we?
Just a terrible.
The levy increase.
It was 10% last year.
Yeah, the tax rate increase was.
Damn it.
Yeah. Your overall levy, that includes, you know, the street levy, the operations, those are the two, two main cogs, the street adding a bond every year, 2% roughly.
I hate to say this to a lot of cities, but we're going to do the same thing that a lot of both cities are.
Cause we're all aging, right?
Well, no, but, but, no, what we're being asked to do, if you think of people who pay taxes for things they want. But I think that's more than police cars and fire trucks.
It's not sexy to go build, buy and go build a group.
To do those kinds of things, but at the same time, you can't, if, if the state gives us less money, we're going to turn around and cut us. I mean, that's the same thing that's happening with the school, the same thing that's happening with the county. All they do, we don't like state taxes, but the county and the school and the city will all raise their taxes to offset what, they're not quite new to state.
You guys, you guys, that I lost them, that damn fiber project comes to town and you start making money hand over fist on that, they can offset some of this.
Correct.
So you're going to guess next?
It's 100% natural. But eventually, you do have that influx of cash. You can start to reduce money when that happens, if not.
Or you can maintain the levy at zero.
Worst case, or then we got to go back and ask for more money, cause I think it's going to fail, but that's a whole other topic.
And that's the idea. We don't, and we don't have, you know, there's only one way that right now the city generates revenues, it's taxes. And, you know, our cable, our cable company, you know, RAP, they generate revenues that just as in the general fund and that's going down every year.
Our general fund is?
No, our cable franchise fee is going down. You know, we now have a gas franchise fee, which is part of the revenues now too. And, you know, and we get the electric franchise fee. So those are all taken into account of the tax to reduce the levy, you know, so.
Worked.
You know, it's our revenues.
There are other communities that are doing things like park districts. That's right.
Yeah. And up on House Member Gardeners with, you know, we use an everyday, we started out funding for the city hall, we were at $500,000 a year. Next year we brought it up, next year we brought it up and everything. I think we should just go back to the $500,000 every year. You know, that's going to help where we're, where some of the money there, not too much, you know, almost price of a squad car. And we use current money, we already got funded in there to fix up for the elevator and the fire alarm system. We'll still be on pace to do the bond and do whatever else, you know, all's worse comes the worse and we just remodel the current city hall, fix it up, we have little problems and just keep funding for later on, because that will, that was all well too. You know, plus we're reducing a little bit, sort of increasing what we're talking in the city hall more every year. We just get that back to a flat $500,000 a year.
I was going to say, there are cities that are looking at doing like park districts where they have one park department between the county and the city and, you know, where you have a different fan, they fund it differently, so you have, you have different kinds of things, but I mean.
So that's your, that's your type of thing?
Well, yes. But you're, yes.
Similar to, you've all heard of Alexandria.
Park district.
What did we do with the school district and we split up the parks and recs and?
Can I talk about the actual physical parks and the land and the programs and those types of things?
You mean just separate fund?
Yeah. It wasn't, it wasn't just staff, this is talking to.
Aren't you like a met council?
Yeah. You know, Alexandria has one, I mean, a few other places, there's, you know, that kind of thing. But that means that you work together with, you know, you give up some of the decision making that's done in your, in your city and you, you now have a park district, but they also have some pretty nice things going on.
They become a tax authority.
Yeah.
And then that takes that portion out of your general fund. You transfer everything to the park districts, the county would transfer their parks into that district and then create the taxing authority now. And then they would tax just for their operations.
I think House Member Gardeners is right. I know the, the path forward needs to be, if we get there this year, next year.
I might get it all up at once, but I bet.
That's the path to go forward. And I think it's going to be a year that's real tough because again, with the instability in DC and St. Paul, like exactly what you said, they're going to, they're going to pass this tax burden on to the county and to the city and the county's going to raise everybody's taxes and we're going to add on to it and people are going to see that in the mail and.
The school district's going to do it too.
Absolutely.
They have unfunded mandates coming out there.
Yeah. It's going to be, it won't necessarily be our fault, but.
The difference is ours aren't necessarily mandates like the school district and the county are on the end too. Ours are just slowly falling apart.
If there's not a fire truck to put out the fire.
Makes it difficult, doesn't it?
The goal is to make out a community that we want to grow and prosper and that people want to come and live and work and play here, then what should we?
I wouldn't think, again, I don't think we can do like, we're going to cut the operating budget by 10%, but I think.
Yeah.
We will carefully adapt and.
Well, it's a whole different discussion, right?
Well, you can say.
Well, you can say if we're going to raise, if we're going to bake a CIP portion of our CIP portion of the budget, then where can we find a proportional, maybe not equal proportional part of the operating work? It's an offset.
I, I think we're probably looking at personnel at some point when that comes up too, right? This is such a huge proportion of the budget. If you're going to reduce the budget in a proportional amount, that's probably.
Contract negotiations starting this year. Probably.
Indians are going to be wanting less money, right?
For sure.
Well, last, 2008, 2009, we had that recession. Company I was working for, for a version, we started up 10% makeup for over six months. It was a mandate, we moved on and take 10%.
The school has, one of them's given a 0%. Nobody was happy to go by the 10%.
So, do you feel like you have what you wanted out of this conversation?
I really liked the discussion. I, I know that, I know that we have, it's, you know, it's hard to turn the Titanic overnight, you know, so we've, we've tried hard to build the CIP, bake it in, you know, so I, I do like the strives of getting there, but like you said, I don't know that we can get there in 26.
So what if we go 50?
Sticker shock. If we did a million, do you see what it looks like?
2.2 is the healthy number. What if we go to 1.1? Okay, that's a $600,000 increase over this year.
Yep.
So 3%.
We could come with that at the preliminary and then when we get our, we'll have an answer on our LGA cuts potentially, we'll have a, an answer on that paid family medical leave act for insurance. So we'll have an answer on that. So we could come back preliminary, the mayor's proposed in September, see what it looks like. Once again, up subject to change, you know, at that time, if, if we, the council were to adopt a preliminary budget, it can only go down, it cannot go up after that point. So that's the, the only limitation as, at that time, so.
I felt like it came a little late for me last time. Just by my own personal feeling, I wish I would have had that information earlier. Which part?
Well, it's the mayor's budget.
It came a little late for me.
No. This was the head of the game though.
Yes.
This was the CIP here.
We're trying to, our goal, I mean, so our goal is to try and, because this was the last thing we really finalized last year in a recession, the week before the final adoption of the budget, TNTs. So this is a huge conversation just to have now to give us a direction to beyond operating.
I, I think like, maybe the philosophy in the past has been, and maybe this is what other cities do and will be the philosophy in the future, it's always struggle with it. It's like, vote for this in September because it doesn't really matter and then we'll fix it in the next couple of months. And I'd rather have it be more.
Or it's set in stone in September?
I don't want it set in stone in September, but I'd like it to be more realistic.
But you can't go up anymore.
I know we can't.
After September, you can't go up.
Yeah, but I agree, right? Like, and I think like, that's what we spent all last year doing. Like, I don't, I, I personally was not comfortable with what we voted for in September. I wanted it to be lower and then we, we never got there. So I don't, I'll just say this, I don't know that I personally am going to be as willing to just vote for it now because we can fix it later. If we don't have time to have those conversations, make some cuts before September, that, when that vote happens, that's where I'll be.
I'm appreciative of the fact that we had a tour and that we had this discussion last night. It's very helpful. Yes, Oliver.
Before, I don't know what the policy is finishing that, for those of you who have connections to our legislators, I'd encourage you to go home and give a call and say, don't cut LGA. We just sat and looked at, we're already looking at what we're going to have to do to raise taxes to even.
To do something.
Do we know what, do we know the position on it? I spent too much money elsewhere.
The Senate? They haven't voted and they.
Do we know what position on it?
No, I don't. But he needs to hear it. I, I talked to him last week about the housing thing, which makes no sense at all. And all they are is mad with it and.
Where did that settle?
It's not done, well, the Senate voted it down, but they, they still have the opportunity to do something. But basically they're mad.
They're trying to put it in the O'Neal's bill so then you want to see it.
Yeah. And, you know, if you change their proposal, it's not going to make housing costs go down. And that was very much acknowledged by Senator Land Ossell, you know, so.
This affects Wilmer 1%, 150,000, give or take. Is it 1% across every city or are some going to get hit much harder and some are going to get 3%?
3%.
statewide.
In counties.
Better off than most.
No, it's a 3% reduction in LGA. Wilmer is, it's going to affect our tax rate 1%. So everybody saw the same reduction proportionally.
Okay.
So.
Dollar mouthed.
Not per capita necessarily.
It's a pretty big formula that goes into it, many factors, so.
One of the reasons why we have a preliminary levy, typically health insurance, which was a big line item for our budget. Providers are not required to provide anything, any numbers to us until the end of September, beginning of October, which is unfortunately past the deadline where we have to have a preliminary budget. So we always guess high and this year it was high, which played a factor into the final budget as well.
And I do remember that factor now, thank you for the reminder.
What happened if we self-funded? That would just be suicide.
Last year we looked at multiple options. We typically go up for both. This last round, we're insured by, which is the public employers, through the state program. We are committed for.
Four years.
Four years, starting at 25. So we are locked in.
Yeah, if you changed their commitment, it used to be two-year commitment and then they went to a four-year commitment.
Some of the reason is to bring stabilization to the market. Some of the reason is to bring stabilization to the market.
Rob, on the, I think that's going on, do you think that's going to come in with any leftover money from that lost yet? With the tariffs charging us for the, the boards coming in? That's, that's my biggest concern. Concern, that's, that's going to push over now or? I don't know it till we get to see it because it won't, it's being built and it won't be shipped till the fall. So hopefully it goes down, that's why we're pressing our fingers that there's no change orders coming up with it, there shouldn't be, but.
It's on the bottom of the quote. I'll do.
You have to just, we're playing the 90-day game right now, so just time it, so.
Yeah, that's. But because it's coming from Canada, that's where I'm concerned about.
But if that does, you know, if the tariffs do hit us, which we would have nothing to cover, are we going to be, and come up for some more money?
I can give you an honest answer on that. I'm sorry.
Have we paid them anything?
What's that?
That's the big question.
Probably paid, probably paid just much for a new set of boards, I just let the terrorists. Play the game that way.
Well, just don't have boards.
We don't have boards though.
Yeah.
Everybody out of the northeast? Didn't cost them any more to produce it.
Direction.
Targets.
Targets.
They're going to put this up in my. So. Anything else? Deciding?
Oh, we're going to shoot for your 2.2 million dollar budget for CA. Now we're going to fund it. But we'll do.
And then we'll have to get our requirements in your package on Monday for.
And we're going to have to remember too, we don't have 2.2 million.
Might not even run again.
It's all. Yeah.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second second.
We adjourn.
Thank you.